The meeting will begin shortly. 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 The meeting will begin shortly.
So, welcome everybody. Welcome back to a meeting of the Ontario City Council. Our, we had a closed session and I'll have a report on that by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, the council met to consider the two items listed on the closed session agenda. The first was a public employee discipline dismissal release. The council, on a vote of four to one, voted to grant the city's appeal of the hearing officer's decision overturning the termination of Griselda Perez. By that action, the termination will be upheld. The votes were Mayor Leon, Mayor Protem, Doris Parada, council member Wapner, and council member Bowman in favor of granting the city's appeal, and council member Valencia opposed. The second item that was considered by the council was a real estate negotiation as listed on the agenda with no reportable action, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we've already had a roll call and everybody is present and are online or on phone. And so we'll begin this portion of the meeting with our pledge of allegiance led by council member Bowman.
Would you please join me in a pledge to our flag? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. In lieu of our invocation and in recognition of the challenges that we're facing within our community and the nation, I ask that we take a brief fifteen-second moment of silence and reflection. Join us. Thank you, everybody. So that takes us to public comments and Madam City Clerk, do you have anybody to speak tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have no written communication or comments. We do have one email comment from Anthony Pace regarding AIDS awareness and flashing lights on one block east of Fourth and Mountain. And we do have one caller on the line who will be given three minutes to address the council.
And make sure that you give them a very clear one minute remaining. So let's go ahead, Karen, and please connect the first caller.
Yes, Mayor, our first caller is Deandre Lampkin. Go ahead, Deandre. You're live at the meeting.
Good evening, members of council and mayor. I, my name is Deandre Lampkin, and tonight I am representing the Lampkin Foundation located here in Ontario, California. As our nation begins to undergo a new round of business restrictions and unemployment benefits begin to dry up for many of our Ontario residents, we just want to remind our residents that in the Greater Ontario region, that the doors to our food pantry continue to remain open. In March, we made a commitment to provide support to our region's vulnerable populations. We're extremely grateful for all the residents who continue to donate and ensure that the food pantry is completely funded through the end of the year. Because of them, vulnerable populations throughout the Greater Ontario region feel that they are not forgotten as we navigate our way through the COVID-19 pandemic together. Anyone who has any questions regarding the hours of the food pantry opening and the days that we do distribution can call our office at nine zero nine nine zero six two zero six eight. And again, we are located in the city of Ontario at two one five one East Convention Center Way. I also want to inform residents that we, for the first time, are having a toy drive to benefit Ontario-based groups with longstanding traditions of providing joy to our Ontario families. Our toy drive is designed to benefit Santa Claus Incorporated, which is located here in Ontario, and serve the Greater Ontario region. And also Christmas Unpleasant, a family who gets together every year to bring joy to foster kids or kids that are in the foster system here in the Ontario, the city of Ontario. Some toy drive suggestions are puzzles, board games, building sets, journal sets, gift cards, game cards, sports equipment, and video games. We are asking that residents drop off whatever toy donations they have or would like to donate, which have to be unwrapped and new here at our corporate headquarters office, again, at two one five one East Convention Center Way, suite two ten. And drop-off boxes have also been provided in our lobby. The, near the Christmas tree. Our toy drive will run from November twentieth through December twentieth. And again, if you have any questions, you can feel free to reach out to our office at nine zero nine nine zero six two zero six eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Deandre. Good job. Okay, so that's the only speaker we have tonight, so that ends our public comment portion. And so it takes us to agenda review and announcements. Do you have anything for us, Mr. City Manager?
Only, sir, that as you consider the consent calendar, there's an item number ten that has an action regarding salaries as part of our reorganization that the city attorney must read into the record following council approval. If you take that action. And then, secondly, on item number nine, the investment update, investment policy update, several council members, in particular, Mr. Bowman, had approached me wanting to make sure that we take some type of recognition for the city treasurer, the director of finance, and their respective team that works on our investments, considering the returns that we're seeing in our portfolio, as well as the trust funds set up by the council for a purpose of addressing long-term liabilities. And so we will do that pursuant to council direction, and thank you for that recognition. That's it, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll move on and it takes us to the consent calendar. I'll take up consideration of the consent calendar. I'll call on our city attorney for item ten in the first quarter budget. Mr. Duran, would you like to talk to us about that now?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an announcement made in accordance with Government Code Section 54953, subsection C three, where the legislative body is required to orally report a summary of a recommendation for a final action on the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of an local agency executive. This evening, on item ten, there are four new department head position classifications that will be established. I will read them now along with the base salary range. The first is Economic Development Director, the base salary range of thirteen thousand twenty-nine dollars to fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars per month. The second is Assistant General Manager Administration and Customer Service and Assistant General Manager Integrated Waste at ten thousand eight hundred and four dollars to fifteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars per month. The third is Innovation Performance and Audit Director, same salary range, ten thousand eight oh four to fifteen oh eight four. The final one is a Budget Director, salary range ten thousand eight oh four to thirteen thousand one thirty. There is also a salary modification for Assistant City Clerk slash Records Management Director, Communications and Community Relations Director. The new base salary for that is ten thousand eight hundred and four dollars to fifteen thousand eighty-four dollars per month. And a salary modification for Housing Director, that range is ten thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars to twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. For each of these positions, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the benefits package equates to approximately three thousand dollars per month. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, all matters listed under consent calendar will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless, remember, the council requests an item to be removed from the consent calendar for a separate vote. We've already heard, well, I don't believe there's any public comments on the consent calendar. Are there, is there Madam City Clerk?
That is correct. No comments.
Okay, so we'll move on and I'll entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
Okay, motion approved by Mayor Protem Parada, second by council member Bowman. We'll take a roll call vote. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mary Leon.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Doris Parada.
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner.
Yes.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia.
Yes.
Motion unanimously.
Thank you. So moving to order, moves that takes us to item number fourteen, administrative report, Madam City Clerk. Administrative reports and discussions, Madam City Clerk, now item number fourteen.
So this is an introduction of an ordinance adding section two dash ten point zero nine Electronic Filing of Campaign Disclosure Statements and Statements of Economic Interest to the City of Ontario Municipal Code.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a discussion or motion from the council.
Motion second.
Voted by council member Bowman, second by Mayor Protem Parada. We'll take a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mary Leon.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Doris Parada.
Yes.
Councilmember Wapner.
Yes.
Member Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Valencia.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, that takes us to staff matters. Mr. City Manager.
Only tonight, sir, that I think the council is in line for free tacos or something because it is Dan Bell's birthday tomorrow, and he is buying for all of you. Other than that, that's it, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to council matters. We'll start all the way down with Mr. Valencia.
Yes, I just want to mention, you know, this is a season that we need to be compassionate. And Mayor Leon, I did hear that you had on Facebook something about your mom, you know, being very ill and coming to the end. And I want you to know that the Valencia family is praying for peace for you and your family during this time. Along those lines, December is a very tough month. Not only do we see, you know, in law enforcement, an uptick in suicides, this year is even, it's compounded with COVID. You know, we have a lot of people losing houses, losing their jobs, you know, losing their marriages behind this. We all need to be compassionate and check in safely on your neighbors and friends and relatives. And just let them know that you care for them, and if they need your help, and you're able to reach out and assist during these times. We're in some unprecedented times, and we all need to work together. And, you know, as a city, I want to thank once again all of our staff who's doing an amazing job. Our law enforcement, fire department, and every single department is really going over and beyond the call of duty. So I want to thank you, and that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bowman.
I just want to thank our city crews, the Convention Center. The tree at Town Square just looks fantastic. Our decorations are up downtown. The spirit is here. It's a great season, and thank you so much for everybody that makes it happen.
All right, Ms. Parada.
I too want to thank city employees. The debris removal because of the winds was just tremendous. And with fifty square miles, we did such an excellent job at getting all that. So thank you to Public Works and everybody that participated in putting us back together again. I also too want to mention some of the charities that are helping out so that we can have a better Christmas. Two of them were already mentioned, Santa Claus Incorporated and Christmas Unpleasant. But also too, the police and fire department are doing an extra special job this year because they don't have Mathis Brothers. So they are picking up families and doing their toy drives in a very special way this year. Also too, the Salvation Army is a longstanding tradition here in Ontario. They need help ringing the bell. So if you've got six, seven people that can take a six-hour timeframe at one of their stations, either at a Target, a Walmart, or one of the grocery stores, give the Salvation Army a call. Tell them that you'd be happy to ring the bell for them for a while, and so they can hopefully make their extra money so they can help their families out this year too. And in closing, we lost a longtime City Hall employee this week. Her name is Barbara Gaddy. And for all of us that knew Barbara, back in the day where if you needed to know what was going on in City Hall, Barbara was your woman. She knew everyone, everything, and where everything was hiding. She worked as the operator for City Hall. She had some fabulous stories. One of the stories that she used to tell is that when people would call because the mural car, they felt that the donkey needed to be fed and didn't have enough water. So that was always a fun story that she told. She was also on our planning commission. So Barbara, may you rest in peace and thank you for her service. And she was also Kwanian too. So for all of us that know Barbara, we will miss her greatly. So thank you very much, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Parada. Mr. Wapner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want you to know that you and I both share prayers for you and your family. I know your mom. She's a great lady.
Thank you.
I don't know how she raised you, but she was a great, she is a great lady. And I know it's always tough going through this kind of a thing, but, you know, God's with you, and I pray for you.
Thank you. Well, my mom's been mentioned, and thank you all for your thoughts. My mom was entrenched at the Ontario Senior Centre. And I just want to say to the staff of the senior centre, it made a difference in her life. She'd been going there for about the past seven years, and then about maybe two years ago, she ended up going back home to Ojai because she had gotten, you know, just aged. And it was easier to handle her needs in her own home with caretakers. And now she has entered into the final hours. And it's been, it's been just challenging to handle all of these issues. But mostly, I'm just very thankful that she was able to come here and be with my brother who lives in Ontario. My mother-in-law lives with us, and so she was with my brother. And if it wasn't for the Ontario Senior Centre and the great staff and her friends that she made there, I don't know how long seniors can last without those kinds of deep and lasting friendships. And I owe a lot to the senior centre and the bus, the Star. A lot of people don't know that the Star bus ride, Alan, you know, you were back around then, and Jim, that it was actually kind of envisioned by me. We had this excess bus from our church, and we just wanted to hand it over. And we worked with the YMCA and the city and ended up having the Star program, which is the senior ride program. And little did I know, you know, eighteen years ago, when we wanted to implement that, that my mom would be one of the people riding on it in, you know, twelve years later. And I know that that Star program is very, it's just essential that we provide that. In Ojai, where my mom lives, there's just, you know, there's some little things that happen for seniors. I don't know many other communities that have as much going on for seniors as we do with the great centre that we have, the food program that we have, that all of the other things that go on at our senior centres. Just, it's just fantastic. And I'll never, I'll always remember, I should say, the kindness that my mom received at our senior centre. She absolutely loved that place. And one of the things that she just really had challenged with by moving back to Ojai was being removed from her friends. So when she would come out here to visit for any reason, she would demand the opportunity to go to the senior centre for the day. And so we did that for, and moving on, and thanks everybody for your condolences. It's kind of tough even talking about it right now, so I'm going to move on. The debris removal Debbie, that you mentioned, and I know that this is just taking a little bit of time, but there were some people on social media who were kind of angered by as much time as it was taking. And I just want to remind them that, as you said, you know, we have a fifty-two-square-mile city, and there were trees falling all over the place, and even people who, their own trees were falling. So there was, we had actually gone and hired extra help to remove the debris. And then there was a second wave of wind that happened a week after the first wave. So I'm reading on social media that people are angry and saying, it took three weeks to clear up the mess. I gotta tell you, that was phenomenal. That staff got it pretty much cleaned up in three weeks. Because you had the first wave, the second wave, we went out and hired extra help. And these, these people, I saw them out there chopping up those trees and the tree limbs and picking them up out of nowhere. I saw an entire tree, a huge tree on, about the corner of F Street and Vine, had fallen completely across the street. I mean, it was, it looked like- I mean, it was, it looked like one of those, those monster movies where you're driving somewhere and they knock the tree down to stop you from moving. And so, you know, our staff went out there and got that out of the street. It's just amazing that the work that they did. So I think it was Herculean and task and they came up to the task and, Scott, you need to make sure that you tell Tito and the rest that they did it, they did it. And I don't care what people see on social media, they don't have a clue what it takes to get it done. And bravo, man, they did it great. Christmas on Euclid is, you know, our tradition, but the reality is, is all you have to do is go to Euclid and you can still experience the Christmas spirit in a great way. And certainly our historical crushes with the, with the, all of the, I'll just say the entire environment is a great place. If you got to do something with your family, go walk from B Street all the way up to G and through the Town Square and you will have an experience. And the tree in Town Square is just spectacular. I don't know how they do it. They just beat themselves every year with the decoration. It's just, we live in a very, very wonderful city and I can't say enough of it that we do a great job at making this a great place to live. Last, I'd like to say that I want to get consensus from the council, but also direct the city manager, that I'd like to have applications for boards and commissions. We've had an election, so it's time to go through our boards and commissions and assess, you know, who is on and who's leaving and give some other people an opportunity that have never maybe had an opportunity to serve in their city. Lots of people brought it up during this last campaign that they would like to serve in the city. And, you know, we don't, we don't have that many commission positions. So I think that it's, you know, maybe it's time to mix it up. Maybe it's time to spread it around. Maybe it's time to see some new people get opportunity. I'm willing to get that going. And I'd like to see those applications come flowing in within the next couple of weeks. And with all of that being said, I know I spoke a lot, but thank you very much. And I'm going to move to adjourn until our next meeting, which is not on my agenda. But it's, it's, Debbie, the 15th?
December 15th.
December 15th. And until then, we will see you then. This meeting is adjourned.
The meeting will begin shortly.